Good evening, everyone. Calling to order the town of Hingham Board Selecting Meeting for Monday, January 15th, 2019. First item of business, approval of the minutes. I want to see a motion to accept the minutes, January 8th, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Over.
Aye.
Other comment? None. Get right to the articles. We're starting that perennial journey to the 2019 town meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, I were inclined to pass on the warrant articles that the town considered for acceptance. That's at the end of April, as you all know. Okay, Tom, first one.
So I would ask that we consider, we need to skip the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund, just because we're still working out the representative this year.
Because it's controversial.
It's a very controversial article.
I think Karen was Chair of AdCom. It took a few meetings.
Yeah.
So if we could jump ahead to Article B, which is the liability for DCR.
My colleagues have any questions?
Nope.
No, this is just standard protection for the town.
Is there an expectation that we'll vote to just sign off on them?
Want to make a motion?
Please, if you would.
I move favorable action on Article B, assumption of liability for DCR.
Second.
Over.
Aye.
Aye.
C. Reports of various town committees. These are the reports that are provided to us by the different committees that have been appointed either by the selectman or the moderator in the course of the year.
Is this the one where, in the comment, does it, do we hear the report and then are some of the committees discharged, or is this just the?
No, this is the annual report, the book.
Oh, oh, the annual report, okay.
But to Karen's point, have any of these, have we checked to see if any of these committees have been discharged during the year?
The annuals that were made, we did, I believe we did some of that cleanup last year.
Okay.
If I remember, Mary, I haven't heard of anything needing to come off this year. Although, now that we say that out loud. Hold on. No.
I mean, I do see that you updated the name of the waste, long-range waste disposal, which is very nice.
Yeah, on this list, so if you remember, the annual report book has reports of all of the different departments and the committees. There are some that are mandatory because they were created by town meeting.
Correct.
And that's what this list represents. It's a good question, though, and I will follow up to make sure that the reports that are in the rest of the book are still required.
Town meeting created the Foster School Building Committee. And so, since town meeting created that, I would wonder.
It's not on here.
I, I'm not seeing it, but we just might want to check because the, I believe that committee perhaps met once or twice during this year.
Yep. You know, given that and this conversation, why don't we hold off on this article? All we're doing is trying to get ahead of the curve here, so holding off on one more perennial isn't going to change anything. And let's make sure that we can get this complete prior to you guys having a vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Article E, salaries of town officers.
There are no changes to this?
No. Same dollars, too.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article E.
Second.
Over.
Aye.
G, transfer from the stabilization fund.
This is the same dollars as last year. This is on the schedule. It's a year, you know, seven of a 20-year schedule.
Okay. Year, say that again, year seven?
It's year X of a multi-year schedule.
Okay.
Okay.
And this, this is the stabilization fund, it says, that includes the proceeds from the sale of the school admin building, the municipal light plant building, and the former police station. And bond premiums. And with the stabilization fund, right, town meeting has to vote to put stuff in and vote to take stuff out, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Want me to make a motion?
Please, if you would.
I move favorable approval on, a vote to recommend the town appropriate the sum of $178,836 from the stabilization fund for the purpose of reducing the FY 2020 tax rate.
Second.
Over.
Aye.
Building Department revolving fund.
Want me to go through this one a little bit? So, the, this number has been historically $300,000 authorized expenditures from the Building Department revolving fund. This year, we're requesting $350,000 to accommodate the vehicle purchases for the building and gas inspectors. It would be a one-year expenditure. This would be the first year, they currently don't have town vehicles, and they're out driving in their own vehicles. I'd like to get them, town vehicles, for both for purposes of identifying who they are when they, when they get to locations, but also, I think it's appropriate, if they're doing town work, that they not be asked to travel in their own vehicle. And also, the, if you think of this as a future, an ongoing program, those vehicles would be available for trade-in when we get around to buying the next round of vehicles for them in X number of years. So this is the largest increase in any single year that we would see for the purposes of vehicles. I would expect that next year, this request would drop back to the 300 range. This is just a one-year increase to accommodate the purchase of vehicles.
Do we know, Tom, what the balance in this account is? I, I believe that the 300,000, it's, what I recall from past years, is that we have put more money into the fund than we've often drawn out, and that has, it has a very sizable balance. Hi, Sue.
Hello. Only because I knew you were going to ask this question. FY 18's fund balance was $704,000.
So, we are proposing using half.
Three fifty, right.
Actually, we won't be using half because their revenue is historically over 300,000.
Yep.
And their expenses are a little over 200. So we're trying to eat down the fund balance.
Yep. I know there's, there was discussion and advisory in past years about the balance in this particular revolving fund getting very high, and the dollars not necessarily cycling out quickly.
If you remember, too, the, this, this fund can only be used
Right.
on expenses for gas and plumbing inspectors.
Yes.
I mean, so there's going to come a point in time when glass, gas and plumbing inspections drop off, so revenue's going to drop off, so.
Okay, and so would expenses at the same point.
Right, right, right.
Yep.
No, I mean, maybe not quite at the pace that we're experiencing right now.
Right.
You think.
Would you take a motion?
I would, indeed.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article J.
Second.
Over.
Aye.
Okay. Which is the Department of Health and Services revolving fund.
And is this a consistent allocation?
So this is up $10,000 off of last year's request. They are intending to be providing, according to Barbara Farnsworth, the COA Director, they'll be, they're anticipating far more programs in the coming year than historically, so she was looking for a little bit more room to accommodate those programs.
And the program fees pay for all the expenses.
And do you have the balance of this one?
FY 18 was 6,600. Approximately. Historically, revenue and expenses are just about even.
For this revolving?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action of Article K.
Second.
Over.
Aye.
The last one for tonight's consideration is acceptance of easements, which is, yeah, Article.
It's M?
M. Pretty standard. Accept the motion.
I move favorable action on Article M, acceptance of easements.
Second.
Over.
Aye.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that's the new Salvo, 2019 town meeting warrant articles. At this juncture, we are now going to have interviews for the position of police lieutenant. We will be interviewing David Petiti, Richard Cochran, Ryan O'Shea, and Darren Adams, in that order. One at a time, obviously.
Hey, David.
Karen.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to see you, Karen.
Karen, welcome.
No.
All right, well, I got yours.
Oh. It's a oil machine.
Should I call you lieutenant, or?
David's fine.
David?
Thank you.
All right, Dave, I see you got a cover letter. We got them all mixed, some of us anyhow.
I am not Ms. Johnson. I'm Paul Healy.
You've been through this before. These are interviews that we, as the appointing authority, engage in. It's, it's pretty informal. Basically, this is an opportunity for you to tell us, as well as the folks at home, a bit about yourself, your background, your time with the department, the position you hold presently, and why you think you'd be a good lieutenant. This will be followed up by questions from each of us, and then I'll give you an opportunity to make a closing statement if you wish. There'll be no appointments made tonight. We, we obviously factor in the recommendation made by the boss, so, being the chief, with the assistance of his deputy. So that, that's where we are. Feel free, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you. First of all, it's an honor to be here in front of the board. I've been an employee at the town of Hingham for 25 years. Actually, this month, the 25th anniversary of being a police officer. I've worked for five chiefs, which, when I, when I realize that and say that, it sounds amazing that, that can happen in 25 years, but it's, it's been a very rewarding career. I, I think of it as chapters in a book. I'm an open book, a lot of the guys, men and women that work for me will, will tell you that. I was adopted at six months old, out of foster care. So what that does to someone is you appreciate your upbringing, you appreciate your parents, you appreciate what you have, fortunate enough to be raised in the town. That helped me over the years as a patrolman. If I would go to a house with a, with the fam, with some family trouble, or kids not getting along with their parents, or kids not having parents, I was able to bring some insight into that successfully. Moving forward from that, I was an FTO, a field training officer, for my entire career in patrol. Back when we didn't call it that, it wasn't a formal program, it was, we needed someone to ride with new officers for three months and kind of guide them and nurture them into the field. The program is more robust now, and it's, it's more official, but I was doing that for the entire time I was in patrol. And it was probably the most rewarding aspect of the job because of what you can instill on people. I would always say to new officers, you're going to ride with a few different people, take bits and pieces from each one. What works for you, and you'll come up with your own persona and your own style, but to this day, it's, that part of my career is, is very rewarding because I'll still get calls whether I'm working or not, my phone's always on. So I'll get calls whether I'm working or not from officers, from either my shift or from other shifts that I've trained or worked with in the past, looking for advice, looking for insight. It could be about a call they're on, it could be about career development. A lot of the officers I helped train over the years have become detectives, sergeants, lieutenants, deputy chiefs. So I've had a very rewarding career. And I looked at that as a, as a perfect stepping stone, as I mentioned in my letter to sergeant. So I found it to be a very smooth transition from a mentoring aspect. I've kind of taken a path in my career, a mentoring path. So to me, it was, it was, you know, hit the ground running, becoming a sergeant. Now you're in charge of the, of the officers, men and women on the road, patrol supervisor. You can be a liaison between the officers and middle management, and you can be an asset to them, whether it be a second opinion at a call, some guidance, a situation where an officer may not feel comfortable being the final word, then I'm the final word. And that, you know, that takes that onus off of them. And to this day, in this day and age, society has changed. Training is more prevalent, training is more needed. I mean, it's a different climate today than it was in, in 1994. So I've continued that, you know, throughout my career. And approximately three and a half years ago, I moved from sergeant to a provisional or temporary lieutenant's position. Chief Olson called me one day and, and said, we have an opening that we need filled. Would you be interested in, you know, I said, by all means. And again, another chapter in my life, in my career, more of a middle management position. So now, in charge of normally the, the officers on the road, but any calls that come into the station, anybody that walks into the station, any prisoners in the station, anything and everything that goes on in the town when the chief is not there. And certainly, on nights and weekends, there is nowhere else to go and have a live person, either on the phone or facing you to speak to about anything. It could be, it could be a legitimate police concern, or it could be at three in the morning, someone calls. You know, one story that comes to mind is, an elderly woman called me one night at two or three in the morning, she was having trouble with her phone, her phone was, was shut off, she was borrowing a neighbor's cellphone, she was very upset about it, didn't know what to do. So I spent some, some time with her on the phone, it was three in the morning, there wasn't a lot else going on, and ultimately, Chief Pereno inquired the next morning, but he's like, did you pay this woman's phone bill last night? I'm like, well, yes, she was very upset, she didn't know where to turn, she had no family in the area, no funds. So he said, I got a call from some family that you paid their mother's phone bill last night. I'm like, yes, I did. So it's just, just little things like that, that, that's, it could be a minor thing to some people, but it was her biggest problem that night. So I liken it to that. And then the other end of the spectrum is, is, you know, horrifying, horrifying things happen. Deaths, death scenes, accidents, officers being hurt or killed. So, you know, it's the full range. But I throw myself into everything that's been put in front of me by the five chiefs. I've had a great working relationship with the five chiefs, with every supervisor I've ever worked with, that was my advice to newer officers that I trained also. Get to know these supervisors, we're all different. We all have different personalities, we all, we all have different pet peeves, likes and dislikes, and, and get to know them, and create a, a positive working relationship. I can work with anybody. I've had, you know, we're human, we have disputes with each other like anybody else, you work through it. Because at the end of the day, the mission is to help people and to serve the town, and, you know, our, our issues with each other are, you know, put aside to continue that.
Well, thank you very much, Lieutenant. I appreciated hearing that. Something tonight. I'd open it up to my colleagues, and I'll do it by seniority, as is appropriate. So, you're up.
I'm like the, you're starting at the lowest end of the toner pole? Wow, all right. I was like, oh, I'm not going for a while now, I guess. Mr. Petiti, I, first of all, I really appreciated the time and care that you took in drafting your, both your cover letter and your resume, I thought it was thoughtfully done, and, you know, as you know, as you rise in the ranks, the skill sets that get called out at, at different points in your career change, and, you know, for me, the, the written and spoken word, I think, are important as you progress, and, you know, I, I just appreciated what you put in front of us.
Thank you.
I thought it was well done. You know, one of the things I would imagine is, is tough, and I've certainly experienced it in, in my working life, is when you're, you're like one of the group, you know, one of the, the peers at a certain level, and you begin to progress in your career, but you're now supervising people that you've served with for a long time, and how you begin to differentiate yourself in a way that you can ascend to sort of that mantle of leadership. And let me just back up to say, and I, I'm sure Paul and Mary will echo this, I view these hires right now as, as some of the most important hires that the town will make, and they're critical hires to the ongoing leadership and stability of the police department. So, you know, I, I think your, your view of your leadership role and your ability to lead and supervise the women and men of the Hingham Police Department, I think, would be, will be critical to the success of this role.
Thank you.
So, coming back to the question then, how have you, how have you sort of managed, you know, I guess, what was probably personal relationships as well as work relationships, and then being able to sort of rise above that and be the boss?
Sure. It's certainly an adjustment, and it can, you know, come with its knocks. I remember being a brand-new sergeant, and, you know, people had to pull me aside, they're like, you know, you don't have to go to every call, you don't have to follow, follow, you know. So you, you then start to find a, a balance where, where I'm needed, where I might be needed, be in the area, where I'm not needed at all, but maybe needed. So, you know, I was proactive in my work as a patrolman, so that is an adjustment, trying to take that step back and be more of a, a support at, at, at the calls, because, you know, if you, if you go to every call and try to beat everyone else into the house, then no one else is going to learn what, what you potentially know, so you're missing some training moments there. So that was, that was an adjustment. You're still on patrol, but certainly you are the boss, so of course, you, you develop friendships over the years. But, you know, the men and women of the department in patrol are the backbone of the department, and it wouldn't exist without them, it wouldn't be successful. So you have to have a mutual respect. My, my, my personal motto has always been a mutual respect. I respect them and the work they do, and in turn, they respect the role I have. So if there are issues that, that come up that need to be addressed, they're addressed firmly but fairly. And that's the only way I can look at it. And then certainly, when I moved to the lieutenant's role three and a half years ago, now you're more of a middle management liaison between the chief and deputy to, to the sergeants and patrol. So then there's more, more oversight, like performance evaluations, for example, that are done twice a year. The deputy will tell you, I'm not the best person at negatively rating officers, so do I need work in that area? Probably. But I tend to look at the good in someone and tend to work with something, if there's something that the department wants addressed, or I want, I want addressed that I don't agree with, then, then I'll have a, a conversation with the officer and, and, you know, do some counseling, and then, and then reevaluate later. You know, that was, that was a growing pain for me as a middle, as middle management also. You know, evaluations are not always going to be perfect. Mine, mine wouldn't be perfect, I am not perfect, I don't know everything. So that was a growing pain, and the deputy will attest to that, that, hey, they can't always be perfect all the time, because then there's no room for improvement.
Right. Make everybody better.
So that's, so that's a, you know, that's a growing pain, too.
Right, right. And then my last question would be around this notion of community policing, and, you know, I'll be honest with you, I'm not quite sure exactly what it means, but I think that, you know, I think it's important for the community to have trust and faith in its police department. I think it's important for the officers to understand the culture of the community and be visible in the community. And so again, I think as you rise in the rank, your ranks, your sort of role in the relationship between the town and the police department evolves, and, you know, I don't know sort of what experience you've had that might fit in that realm, but if, if you could just comment on that notion.
You know, community policing, there are tangible, more visible examples of it, such as a Family Fun Day, or Citizens Police Academy, for youth, for adults, for, for the elders, programs like, you know, car seat safety type things. So there were your tangible, more visible examples of it, interacting with the public on your shift, you know. But then there were, but it's really something that can happen at any given call, any given moment. Going into, into someone's house and spending an extra 10 minutes on giving them some options, some resources. Someone that you can tell isn't comfortable with you leaving yet, you've resolved the problem, but they're not quite comfortable yet with you leaving, and just taking that, that extra time. You know, I remember being on patrol late at night and getting the call from the station or the sergeant, like, at shift change, I'm like, where are you? Where's the, we need the car, where are you? Well, this, you know, one example that comes to mind, I was talking to a 12-year-old boy that had tried to harm himself. And I was a single parent, mother was home with him, and we spent considerable amount of time talking because he was afraid to go to the hospital. So the station's calling me, where are you? Shift's over, we need the car back. And I said, look, I've got him to the point where he'll go to the hospital, but he wants me to ride with him. He wasn't comfortable just, you know, going by himself in the ambulance, so. So I brought him to the hospital and spent some time with him and resolved the situation. So, community policing can be the tangible, more visible examples, programs, if you will, in the department.
Yeah, yeah.
Which this department is well-known for its programs for the community. But in addition to that, it can be just putting a little bit of yourself and taking a little extra time and, and bridging that gap between the police and the community.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I'm going to ask two questions. The first one, what, as you think about what's ahead for the Hingham Police Department, what do you see as the big issues or challenges that the department's going to face in the next, you know, five to 10 years?
I think society's views have changed, which have required us to change and be more cognizant of that. The training requirements for this role have changed dramatically since 1994, and the department has always attempted to, you know, institute more additional training and more advanced training into the department, because the roles are ever-changing. You're really expected to wear, you know, 10 hats on the road. So I think, I think training is a huge aspect, keeping up with the trends in training. This department is also well ahead of its department peers in the area with, with equipment, very progressive equipment, very progressive training, tactical training, with the unfortunate, you know, subject of school shootings and active shooter scenarios. That's been instituted now into our regularly yearly trainings. It's unfortunate that that's needed, but it is needed, and, you know, this department is no compare when, when it comes to training and equipment in this area. So I think, I think moving forward, continuing to adjust to, to training needs, equipment needs, and the, the change in national trends, and just being ahead of that, that curve as much as we can.
Thank you. And, you know, my final question, you've, you've spent a lot of your time training other officers and being, you know, being in a leadership role in a lot of different ways, and, and certainly with the lieutenant, you know, you're, you're a leader, and how you, how you approach things, how you conduct yourself, is, is something that sends a message out to the, you know, the rest of the police force. You've given us a couple really good examples that, that I've found helpful in giving some insight into how you approach the job. I, I just wondered if, if maybe you could give us an example from some point in your career in the Hingham Police Department, you know, where, where you had to demonstrate some leadership, whether it was, regardless of the role, could you maybe tell us about a situation where you needed to demonstrate leadership with respect to, you know, other members of the police force?
Sure, I've been involved in some, some search scenarios where there was a child missing from a home, one scenario that comes to mind, it's another child missing in the woods, and that can require a lot of management as far as bringing in additional personnel and resources, managing personnel, making sure that there's enough personnel to cover the, the needs of the town, bringing in extra personnel. town, bringing in extra personnel, and coordinating with, you know, with the family. And so, a couple of missing persons cases that come to mind. There have been some other scenarios where people were armed in homes, where I had to make decisions to enter the home safely with other officers and remedy those situations. And this was prior to the days of now, we have some options as far as a regional SWAT team of which we're members. So, prior to that, you got together with a bunch of officers, you formulated a plan, and you did what you had to do to keep the residents safe. So, I would say missing persons cases. And, you know, that tactical scenario comes to mind, where, you know, no one wants to send, as a supervisor, no one wants to send their officers into harm's way. But, the men and women I work with would do that for me, and I would do it for them.
Thank you very much.
Lieutenant, I've watched you in your career, and I've enjoyed seeing your professionalism on the street. It's no surprise that you're sitting here before me tonight.
Thank you.
I work for four chiefs, and I can appreciate the management style that each brings to the table. I'm told that the police mission is evolving and changing. I'm wondering, sir, how you see your role as lieutenant in that evolving dynamic that's been described to me? Where do you fit in relation to your management down and your responsiveness up to the deputy and the chief?
I see the role becoming more crucial. We're a younger department than when I started. There's a lot of new officers, there's been a lot of change, you know, turnover, as you know. So, it's a younger department. We've lost a lot of our most senior personnel. So, I feel that both the sergeant and lieutenant's roles have taken on added responsibilities in managing the personnel and helping them, nurturing them into career growth and career paths, and making sure that, you know, they're, they have the tools they need, both in training, equipment, and the mindset to get the job done. So, moving forward, as a very young department, I see the roles expanding in that manner. And some of the examples I gave earlier with additional training needs and, you know, national trends, and us needing to be more careful than we ever have before, I see the chief and the deputy relying upon those positions more to take some off of their plates and, you know, manage the personnel in that manner.
What is the most important asset of the Hingham Police Department, and what is the thing that you, as a lieutenant, would have zero tolerance for?
Integrity. If I say something to someone, it has to be the truth. I'm only as good as my word. So, any police officer of any rank within the town, you have to have that trust with the community. So, they have to trust that when we say or do something, it's truthful, A, and B, it's in their best interest.
Thank you very much. Is there anything you'd like to add before we go on to the next fellow officer?
Again, it's an honor to be before you. The last time before you was in 2009, when I made sergeant. That was an extremely rewarding experience, and this is as well. And, again, I appreciate the opportunity. I hope you see fit to make me permanent in this role. I'd like to continue the work I've been doing, and my job's not done, so I have more to do.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As I said to David, this is informal, giving you an opportunity to describe yourself to the town, leave behind what you've done, why you think you'd be good lieutenant, or to be promoted to lieutenant. The three of us will ask a couple of questions, and if there's anything you'd like to add as a follow-on, you're welcome to do so. So, with that, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. My name's Rusty Corcoran. Richard on the resume, but I've been known my whole life as Rusty. I've been on the police department one year less than I've been married. My wife is here to support me tonight. And during that 39 years, I've had a lot of opportunities to meet people, progress within the police department. Paul Hill will know that, as being my sergeant when I was on the police department on the midnight shift years ago. During that time I've been on the job, I've been a, was a sergeant since 1998. In 1999, I became the traffic sergeant. I ran the traffic division for approximately five, five and a half years. And then in 2005, I became the police prosecutor, assigned down to the Hingham District Court. I was assigned down there for 10 years. And at that time, an opportunity arose to be promoted to temporary lieutenant position, provisional. And I weighed all the options and decided it was a good move for me at the time. And I've been a provisional lieutenant now for three and a half years, on midnight shift and on the day shift.
Okay. I must say, looking at your resume, I find it quite impressive.
Thank you.
You're an extremely experienced officer, and your service to the country is to be commended as well.
Thank you.
We're starting with, we're doing this by senority, so we're starting with you.
You put me on the hot seat first. Well, I said this to your colleague, and I'll say it again for your benefit, but I think Paul, Mary, and I would all agree that these promotions, these permanent promotions to lieutenant are key hires for the police department. You know, I think the stability of leadership within the department is essential to its evolution and continued development. And so, you know, this is an important role for us to play tonight, and we certainly appreciate you making the time to come in. And as Paul said, you know, take the time to put together a resume that really details just incredible service, both to the town and to our country. You know, you, when you were talking about your experience as sergeant of the traffic division, I think you gloss over exactly what that means, because you were sergeant of the traffic division during the development of the shipyard, the Derby Street shops, the Green Bush project. This isn't, these were, it was a meaty, meaty assignment and something that was, again, critical, sort of critical time and place of the town. So, you know, I think that was a, to me, that position alone demonstrates, I think, you know, your significant contributions. And, you know, 10 years serving as the sergeant prosecutor, again, is just a significant role to play on behalf of the department. So, I would agree with Paul. I think your resume sort of speaks for itself. You know, one of the questions I guess I have is, as you rise in the ranks, you know, you serve with a peer group that sort of moves along with you, and then at some point, you continue to rise, and some of those folks sort of stay where they are. And it puts you, maybe sometimes from a personal perspective, in an awkward spot of, you know, of having to be the boss. And, again, I think from a leadership perspective, that's part of the expectation of what this lieutenant role would mean. And you're serving in it now, so you know what I'm talking about. But I guess I'm sort of wondering how you've dealt with it and how you see yourself dealing with that ability to differentiate yourself in the workforce.
Well, I think 39 years on the job, you've seen the way when somebody, you have to maybe discipline somebody. And you've been with them for a long time.
Right.
You know, from 39 years ago, times have changed, and everybody has to be held accountable. And I think now we have a great crop of officers on the job right now, where they know that. They're coming onto a job where, when they go out in the morning or in the afternoon, they know they have a job to do. And if they don't fulfill that job, they know there's, you know, sometimes something that you have to pay for. And paying for it sometimes might mean a different assignment. And it also might mean that you have to be put into a role such as you're not producing enough citations. So, you have to be put in a role as a directed patrol, and for this period of time, you're going to go, and this is what your job is for that period of time. And, you know, not too often does it have to go beyond the lieutenant's position. I know it has in the past. I've, myself, had to bring people before the deputy chief and the chief. And it's not easy, because it's the people that you work with eight hours a day, you know, five days a week. And you have to, you know, we're not large enough that it's not a family atmosphere.
Yeah.
Because it is a family atmosphere. You know, we're close. You know, most of the people that have been on the shifts have been on there for a long time. So, it's, sometimes it's not easy, but it has to be done.
Great. Thank you. And I would be remiss in not thanking you, Mrs. Corcoran, both for being here tonight and being a part of the greater police family for these last 39 years. So, appreciate your sharing him with us. My last question is, and I said this the last time, too, you know, I think you hear a lot about community policing these days. And again, I'm not exactly sure what that all means, but I do think it's important that the town respect and trust the police department and each and every police officer. And I also think it's important, you know, sort of on the other side, that the women and men of the Hingham Police Department understand the community that they serve. And I'm just wondering, in a leadership role in the department, what that means to you and how you would sort of help build the face of the Hingham Police Department in Hingham?
Well, I mean, the community policing goes to our core values, and is working with the community to build a partnership. And years ago, when we started the Citizens Police Academy, it was in its infancy. The second year that it was created, I became the director of the Citizens Police Academy. I did that for about five years. And then after, probably about the fifth or sixth class, there were a lot of people that were helping out, and they wanted to still be part of the police department. And we were still reaching out to the community to have more classes. And that's when we came up with the idea of having a Citizens Police alumni. And we put that Citizens Police alumni together, and for many years, I was the chairman of that Citizens Police alumni, passing off that responsibility to Chief Perino when he was here. And I think the chief now, he's now the chairman, and, you know, it's drawing in the people and being part of the community. And that just goes to our core values of, you know, what does the community want? And hopefully, the community will find out what we want and need to. And once you get together and make it so that somebody can walk in the front door now without saying, oh, my goodness, I'm walking into the police station. And they walk in and they see a friendly face, somebody that they might know. It's very helpful.
Thank you.
I would echo my colleagues' comments about your experience in the resume. And I would just comment, I'm a training and development specialist kind of, you know, in my paid job. And I appreciate your commitment to being a lifelong learner. You've got, you know, this package has two pages of additional training certification. And I think that's really important in all our roles, because they're always changing. My first question is, as you think about the Hingham Police Department and you think about what's ahead, what issues and challenges will the police department face in the next five to 10 years, do you think?
I think officer-involved shootings is probably number one in the country. In that, you have to look at what started it, what, how did it become? Was it as a result of somebody that had a firearm or another type of weapon? In that also is the transparency of an investigation that takes place. Is that investigation internal or external? And, you know, what led to that? Was it the police officer's manner that might have led to something? So, I think officer-involved shooting is very key right now. Second, I would say maybe the officer's cameras. And part of that issue is, and we already have cameras in our cruises now, and they've been helpful. They've been helpful at least to one officer that I know that was accused of something. And then they were able to play back the video of the exchange between the officer and the person, and the officer was 100% exonerated. Part of that problem is, what do you do? When do you turn it on? When do you turn it off? How do you release it? And how do you store it? And how to store it is a huge thing. You know, you can go into the cloud, and right now, we have Tazza's. Tazza's is the leading manufacturer of body-worn cameras. And they, you can go through the cloud with them, but it costs per unit. And then it costs per year, obviously. So, a small town, it would generate a significant amount to the budget. Another thing is the opiate abuse that we have that's going on right now. We've started the outreach program in Hingham, which is functioning very well with the two outreach coordinators that we have, someone you'll see a little bit later. Sergeant O'Shea is one of our lead guys in the outreach. So, when we have an overdose in the town of Hingham, we reach out to those people, and we try to steer them in the right direction, try to help them out as much as we can. I think those are three that probably, I mean, there's a whole bunch that will affect in the future. But I think those are three pretty key areas.
Thank you. And my final question, you know, as a lieutenant, you're a leader in a lot of different ways, not just in how you conduct yourself, but there are times when you have to coach people, where you have to give them feedback, where you have to help train them on doing something. Can you think of an example that would help us get a picture of your leadership style?
I like to think of myself as balanced. And, because I think I do incorporate more than one type of leadership style. In one respect, you have to be autocratic. As a lead firearms instructor, you have X amount of time to do X amount of training with a very serious issue. And you can't have any, well, what do you want to do now? What would you like to do now? How do you guys feel about something like this? You have to be very direct in it. You have to tell them what you want them to do, and how you want them to do it, and when you want them to do it. You know, the chief has goals and visions. And not everybody, you know, we're, like I said, we're a family. We don't always agree. And that includes some of the chief's goals and visions. And you have to work these, your troops, to understand why we need some of the visions, and work the ways, see how to figure it out, how to get them to agree to, you know, go along with them voluntarily. You know, you can always force them to be autocratic all the time, but that really doesn't work. You know, but being balanced is probably the best style.
Thank you very much.
I go last. Rusty, I have to say, you and I graduated the same year from high school together, and I enjoyed working the midnight shift with you. And in my capacity as a lawyer, working with you down at the courthouse, I found to be refreshing and positive. I thought you were very balanced in the approach that you took with respect to the prosecutions the department made, at least insofar as it involved myself. I just felt I was dealing with somebody who was fair. So, I was listening to your statements concerning your management style, some of your expectations, and I was pleased to hear that, because it kind of ties into my question. As lieutenant, which you've been one now for several years, where would you see your role going forward with respect to the officers you supervise and the deputy and the chief that you'd be working with?
Whatever the chief wants, the deputy wants, is what I want. And, you know, we'll make it happen. And it's, I haven't always agreed with the chief. The chief and I graduated the academy together, so, you know, we've had a long career together, again, as a family. Again, as a family, we don't always see eye to eye, but he's the boss. And the boss has, has, has goals, he has visions. And he's the one that sits in front of you and says, this is what I want in five years. This is what I want in ten years for the Hingham Police Department. So we have to say, you know, he's looking out for the betterment of the Hingham Police Department. He's got a little bit more knowledge of what you people, advisory committee are looking for, and that's how he brings that to us. So what the chief wants, what the deputy wants is pretty much what I want and we'll make it happen.
What do you think the department's greatest strength is? And what do you have zero tolerance for?
Greatest strength is, I, I think the training that we're allowed to participate in. If somebody wants some training, pretty much all they have to do is ask for it and we make the arrangements for that to happen. I mean, I didn't attend all of those training classes on my own without, you know, having somebody say, you know, hey, we'll let somebody go to training. So I think that's probably one of our greatest strengths is that we provide the training and the knowledge so that we can go out there and, and fairly do our job. And that's, you know, tough in today's ages to, to everybody look at you and, you know, not just see the blue and they see somebody else. No tolerance?
Zero tolerance.
Uniforms, timeliness, not much at all. And that's, when I do my evaluations every year, that's number one and two on my, on my radar. I want you to be into work on time. I want you to be ready to go to work on time. Chief expects me to be here on time. He actually expects me to be here fifteen minutes early. Being fifteen minutes early is being on time.
Sure.
You know, we were here, I was here today with my four comrades at six-thirty, probably parked out front a little bit earlier than that, you know, because that's the way it's supposed to be. I think that's...
All right. Well, thank you so much. Is there anything you'd like to say before we move on to one of your colleagues?
No, I thank you all for, for letting me take this opportunity. I don't have much longer to be here. Unless something happens to my, my chief and deputy in the back there, I'll, I'll probably retire as a lieutenant. You know, maybe they'll take another job somewhere and, you know, I can put in for their position.
Well, I want, I want to thank you for your service to the town sincerely.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Like I said, I have two more years to go. I don't plan to leave.
It's a long haul in uniform.
It is. And I, I look at it that I could have gone about ten years ago, but I like it. I like, I still like my job. I like coming to work. Not every day, but, but, you know, I still like coming to work. And, and, you know, I like meeting all the different faces with the selectmen over the years. I mean, it's thirty-nine years, I've seen a few selectmen, you know?
All right. Thanks so much, Rusty.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bless me.
About an hour and a half. Good job, good job.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next, who we're going to be speaking with is Sergeant Ryan O'Shea.
Hey, nice to see you tonight.
Sergeant, how are you?
Nice to see you, welcome. How are you?
Ryan, please forgive me if I'm somewhat informal, but I started my remarks addressing your colleagues by their first name and then I default to your rank as I move along.
He's just keeping you on your toes.
This is, this is an informal proceeding and you've been through it before, but not with us. This gives you the opportunity to speak to us as well as to the town to tell us something about yourself and describe, you know, the path that your career has taken within the department and why you think you'd be a good lieutenant. We'll follow on with a couple of questions each and then we'll give you the opportunity to the extent that you want to take it, to make a final closing statement, if you will. So, sir, you have the floor and there you go.
Let me start by saying I was last in the seat in maybe about 2011 and it's not any more comfortable than it was today. A little hotter, actually, but...
Do you want some water or something?
Yeah. Thank you all for taking the time to have me here. I grew up in Hingham. I went to foster school. I went to junior high here. Went to Hingham High School, went off to UMass Amherst. And the end of 2002, I was fortunate enough to get hired and went to the police academy. I worked before the midnight shift for about eight years and during that time, I was a field training officer. And towards the end of 2010, I became a detective. Great job, my dream job. At that same time, I had taken the, the promotional exam. So 2011 came around and opportunity arose to become sergeant. And it was, it was a difficult decision in some ways because I had my dream job, but I wanted to take the next step and I think I was ready to take the next step at that point and so I took the next step. I was on midnights for five years as a sergeant on midnight. I worked with Lieutenant Petiti for a few years and Lieutenant Corcoran for a few years also. And then in 2016, around June, I kind of had the opportunity to merge both of these jobs that I love so much. The opportunity came along and I became detective sergeant. And I've been in that position since then. I work, it's a, I'm going to throw out other people's names here because this isn't just about me. It's a, everything I do is a team effort. So I work with John Marquardt, Phil Tracy and Dan Larry, and we have a great, great team up there. We work a lot of cases, a lot of difficult cases, and we've had a lot of success. So I love being in that job, but again, this opportunity came along and I wanted to take advantage of it. And besides those promotions, there's a few things I do that I'd like to touch on because I really enjoy them. One is now I'm a field training coordinator, so I'm no longer a field training officer, but I get to oversee the, the officers that do field train. So I do schedules, I check reports, do evaluations, I do a final evaluation on the officers that come out of the program. I have six field training officers and again, they're excellent, they work hard, they show up when they're supposed to, they provide feedback, you know, good and bad when it's needed. We make the corrections and give guidance to the officers. And we have a great group of young new officers that are out on the road and they're doing a fine job and in part, thanks to our, our field training officers. Another task that I do is Plymouth County Outreach and the chief has been instrumental in that. And that's a, it's a county-wide initiative to provide services to people with substance use disorder. We've had an overdose, so say somebody has an overdose, like in Hanover. So Hanover would reach out to us. We'd get a outreach coach, we use Kurt Gerald, who's come through us through Pari. He's outstanding. So he would go out with either myself or Nick Smith and Lisa McCracken, the two other people that helped me. You'll see them in a number of weeks, they're going to probably interview in front of you. And we go, we offer, offer resources to people that have, that have had an overdose. Or if we can't get a hold of them, their family, because it's also a crucial component. And sometimes it's even a better component, you know, get the family educated up to speed on what options are available and then they, you know, they can make the case to their, their relative. Countywide, the statistics is like, we make contact like sixty percent of the time with people that have had an overdose. And of that, I think it's another sixty percent like get treatment or seek some sort of help or, you know, at the hospital, they seek help. So it's pretty successful and we have started to notice a trend of decreases in overdoses. So obviously a very good thing. And another job that I do, I know you all know me from the Citizens Police Academy, and I do that along with Sergeant Matt Lucas and Frank Shealan from the Alumni Association helps us also. Frank, you're probably watching at home, so hi. He's great and Sergeant Luke's is great and we have a great program there. I started with a deputy, not that I started it, but I started with Deputy Chief Jones and then when he moved along, Sergeant Lucas joined me and we've, you know, we've been up there for a number of classes. I think it's a great community policing-type program. People really seem to enjoy it and we get a lot of positive feedback. And not only that, we, all the time, I get departments reaching out to me. I just recently had a department from Vermont reaching out to me like, show us your model, show us how you do this. You know, tell us how we can run a program that's similar because we know yours is so successful. So it's always nice to, you know, know we have that reputation. So, yeah, it's just a little bit about me and, and some of the things that I do.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
I'm up. Well, for your benefit, I've said this the last couple of times, you know, I, I think in our view, and I know in the chief and deputy chief's view, these lieutenant positions are, are critical hires for the police department because they really are the future of the police department. And so I appreciate you making some time tonight to come and, and talk with us about your potential role in that sort of evolution and development in the police department. And I especially appreciate the, the time and effort you put into both your cover letter and, and your resume. It really helps, I think, try to capture at least on paper, your significant experience over the course of your career. So I, I, it, it helps us, I think, kind of formulate at least, you know, one part of who you are and then your time tonight, you know, kind of puts a face with all of those great experiences. And I, I had the opportunity to get to know you as part of the Citizens Police Academy and, you know, I will say, from a community policing standpoint, it was one of the most rewarding things that I've done in the last several years in town. And I think that the amount of time and effort that both you and Matt put into the curriculum, it's no wonder other police departments are calling you to find out what your model is. You know, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think you're one of the longest running, the department has one of the longest running Citizens Police Academies around. And I was just so impressed with each and every officer that, that spoke before us. I remember one, one night, you know, we're sitting, listening to, you know, the dog training officers, for instance, and just well-spoken, articulate, thoughtful. And I know that, you know, they don't just show up and do that. It's, it's sort of your leadership and I think helping frame that experience for both the officer and the public that makes the difference. And so, so to that end, you know, in this kind of next level leadership role, you know, to me, community policing, policing has two prongs. I, I think the, the face of the police department needs to be in the public. We need to understand what you do and how you do it. But we also need to be able to trust you and we also need you to sort of understand the culture of the community. And so I think it's kind of a multifaceted concept and I'm just wondering, again, as you progress in the leadership of the police department, how you, how you view that?
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree with it. I think we can continue to build off of what we have already. You know, I think, you know, community policing, part of it is problem solving and, you know, in some ways, so we, you know, we have SROs in the high school, like Notre Dame now has an SRO because they've, they've seen how great the SRO in the high school and the junior, the junior high and, and the elementary schools have done. So I think we continue to build off of what we have. And, you know, just, even just some of the little events that we do, they're just, you know, family fun day or we do a senior dinner around the holiday time. I think just getting ourselves out there is, is important and like, like you said, just the persona kind of and just interacting with people in a positive fashion, so.
Right. And, you know, I think one of the other things that jumps out at me is your participation on the honor guard. You know, those kind of moments in, that are important, ceremonially important to the town, you know, to look over and see you and your colleagues as part of that effort, I, I find, you know, I find inspirational. So I, again, I know it's, it's more time and more time and more time, but the, the more the community sees you, the, the sort of, you know, I, I think the more they're identifying with the role of the police department in town.
Yeah, and we just want to show we're a part of the community.
Right.
You know, we're not a wall, we're not a, you know, something to be scared of. We're citizens of the community, just like everyone else, we just have a little bit different role, so.
Right. And my, my last question is just, you know, as you've progressed through the ranks, you know, you've, I'm sure that you have personal relationships with the, the men and women that you work with. And I'm wondering, you know, in, in this role, you need to demand excellence and you need to demand performance, it seems to me. And I'm wondering, you know, do, do you think that's going to be challenging for you or in, in what ways do you see yourself being able to, you know, kind of instill those expectations within the department of, within department as it is?
Leadership in its simplest kind of definition is just influencing others. So if you've walked the walk, for lack of a better term, you've set those standards for yourself, I don't have an issue with demanding that of other, other people. And if they've seen you do it, I, I think they will, you know, so. But no, I love that, what, what you said about excellence, demanding excellence. And that's certainly if fortunate enough to become lieutenant, that is what I would demand, but I've, I've shown excellence through writing reports, how you handle calls, how you treat other people, both civilians and people within your department. I've guided people, I've helped them develop and grow, so I wouldn't have any, any qualms in that avenue.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for applying for this and I, I really appreciate the diversity of experience that you had and some of your opening remarks about the field training coordinator role Plymouth County Outreach that was helpful to see. As you think about the Hingham Police Department over the next five to ten years, what issues and challenges will the department be facing?
I think externally, we've gone from being like crime fighters, right? It's, you know, you'll, you know, see yourself on television and how we're depicted, but we're so much more than that now, now we're social workers. Mental health is kind of a hot topic now as it, you know, rightfully so. So I see that developing. We're, you know, we're doing some work. We have some officers that have been trained in CIT, crisis intervention training, and I see that expanding. There's a, there's a campaign called the One Mind Campaign and the chief is, chief is behind it and the, the goal is to have like eighty percent of the department trained within a, a period of time. So I see that as an external challenge going forward and I think one we'll meet, but the demands are there. Like again, in terms of social work, mental health, those are just kind of different avenues in addition to the, the job we still do, which is, you know, enforcing laws and keeping peace. Internally, I see something, you know, leadership to me is, is going to be important. We have a very young department and we have a great group of young officers, a ton of potential, very intelligent, hardworking. And I'd like to see them develop. Unfortunately, it's not, you just don't send someone to a leadership training and then, oh, great, you're a leader now. Something that takes time, over years, might be a lot of training, a lot of guidance, but I see as a, a challenge, again, one we can meet internally, but, and one that's important.
And, and, and along those lines, as a lieutenant, you're a leader and as you mentioned, you, you know, you sort of set the tone and you model the behavior that you expect from others. I'm curious if there's an, an example from some point in your career where you had to demonstrate leadership within the department that, you know, maybe stands out to you? And if you could maybe tell us a little bit about, you know, a situation where you had to display leadership?
That's a bad time to draw a blank, I suppose.
You know, perhaps it could be when you're training people or, you know, perhaps a difficult, you know, a difficult call where, you know, you had to make decisions on the spot, having to maybe give somebody some feedback on how, you know, a new officer...
Yeah, I think it's something that kind of just occurs all the time. Up in detectives, we get, you know, reports sent up, up to us for continued follow-up and sometimes they, they just require some additional input by the officer or some, some additional information. So that'd be like kind of a, you know, it's kind of a vague example, but, you know, that would be one example. All, we fairly frequently execute search warrants. We, me and myself, detectives, sometimes we'll have patrol officer, oftentimes officers from other towns or other agencies. And again, we have to, I have to manage all those people, make sure they do their roles properly so that no one gets hurt and we accomplish the task at hand. So that would be a, kind of just another, again, it's kind of a vague example, but it's something that does occur frequently.
Thank you. I think through some of this, you've given us a sense that a lot of your work not only involves law enforcement officials from inside the community, but also outside the community. And I, I think that's pretty important as we're looking at, as we're looking at leadership positions in the police department. So thank you.
Sergeant, good evening.
Evening. be a, kind of, just another, again, it's kind of a vague example, but it's something that does occur frequently.
Thank you. I think through some of this, you've given us a sense that a lot of your work not only involves law enforcement officials from inside the community, but also outside the community. And I think that's pretty important as we're looking at, as we're looking at leadership positions in the police department. So, thank you.
Sergeant, good evening.
Evening.
First of all, I have to congratulate you on your career. And you couldn't know this, but it's come to my attention, both by personal observation as well as what your peers say about you. You're extremely well respected as a policeman and as a sergeant and as a detective sergeant. What I enjoyed in your remarks to my colleague was the credit that you gave to your coworkers, both within your unit and outside of it. And I think that that signals to us a very important quality in any leader, sharing the credit. I've asked the same two questions to your two colleagues that preceded you, so I'm not going to veer off it, although I'm tempted. But my question, sir, is this, as the lieutenant, where do you see your role with respect to the patrolman and sergeant that you'd be supervising, and your role with the deputy and the chief?
I think the lieutenant's the bridge between exactly those people that you're talking about. I think it's an extremely important role. You're transmitting a message downstream in a way whether the chief and deputy are having you put out there, the, you know, directives that are important to the department. But then you're also, you know, taking the feedback and sending it back up the line. So it's a very important role. You know, you could, you know, not all at once, but a shift may have eleven people on it, spread over the number of days. So it's a lot of people to supervise. But it is extremely important, like I said, being that bridge, I think, is the critical aspect of the job.
The last question I have, Sergeant, is this. In your opinion, what is the most important asset of the department and what is it that you have zero tolerance for?
The personnel, by far, the most important asset of the department. It's nice to have, you know, up-to-date equipment, which we do, and, you know, up-to-date technology. But it's the people that have always made the department run and have always made us kind of a special place. You know, you talk to officers from other departments. This is a good place to work. And we've had people lateral over recently. People want to come here and work. It's a great place. It's a great town to work in. So to me, that's the most important asset. Just personally, something I, you know, what do I talk about? I like really well-written reports. And part of it, I was an English major, so, you know, it plays into it to some extent. But that's really important to me, especially being up in detectives. Our reports have to be, you know, spot-on. So certainly something I'm willing to help officers with if they need it. We do have officers that write excellent, excellent reports. But, you know, in the case that we need to make some improvements, I have no problem sitting down with somebody and just kind of making those adjustments.
Is there anything you'd like to add, Sergeant, before we conclude our conversation with you?
No, thank you for the time. I really appreciate the opportunity. And thanks for having me here.
Pleasure to speak with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Hi, Karen Johnson.
Good evening, Darren.
Mary Power.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, Michelle.
How are you, sir? Darren, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going with the informal, but I'll revert to your title shortly, as I did with your colleagues. This is a, this is an informal proceeding. As you know, we are the appointing authority in town. So we take this opportunity to meet with the, under consideration for the leadership positions that were called to fill. You've gone through the assessment experience, which the chief and the deputy will lay out in greater detail at a subsequent meeting. And their recommendation is obviously factored into any decision that we make. But this gives us an opportunity, as well as the community, to meet you. And perhaps many of the citizens have not met you.
Hopefully.
I know I haven't.
So we start like that.
Okay.
You get an opportunity to tell us something about yourself, you know, your career, what you've done in it, why you think you'd be a good lieutenant. And then we'll ask you a couple of questions each. And then you'll have an opportunity to conclude, to the extent you want to say anything at all.
Okay.
That's all it is. All right. So you have the floor, sir.
So I was born and raised in Hingham in nineteen sixty-three. I'm a graduate of the class of eighty-one, Hingham High School. After that, I went on to Massachusetts Community College where I received my degree in law enforcement, an associate's degree. And then after that, there was this thing they called Proposition Two and a Half, where even though I was scoring very well on the civil service exams, there was no openings. I think it was like a ten-year period, nineteen eighty-four to nineteen ninety-four, where there wasn't much hiring. There was a few, but just the opportunity to get in here and see the board selection was just, it didn't happen. So it finally did happen in nineteen ninety-four. I was hired under Chief Barowski. And for twelve years, I was a patrolman, mostly on the day shift, which was kind of weird. Usually you start your career on the nights, midnights. But at that time, it was just, I was put on the day shift right away. And while I was a patrolman, I held some positions. I was a field training officer. I was a fire round licensing officer. I was the, at one point, I was liaison to the square merchants. It was mostly, back then, it was the parking in the square. It's basically what I did. Every time there was a parking issue, they called me.
Talking about that.
Exactly.
I remember one of the first people who got my cell phone number was the square merchants president. So that was one of the first persons who got my cell phone number. That was a big deal back then. We didn't have cell phones. So finally, in two thousand and five, I have to put a shout-out to the, to the late Chief Carlson. He really changed my career as far as leadership went. I really wanted to be a detective. From day one, I was shooting for the detective. And he saw in me something that, he pulled me aside and said, you're a, you're a leadership guy. And I think I want to kind of steer you towards that. So he started sending me to management schools as a patrolman, some of which I was the only cop in the room. I was in with businessmen and businesswomen and presidents and CEOs. And I looked around the room and I said, geez, I'm the only cop in here. So finally, he made me sergeant in two thousand and five. And since then, I've been, oh, I heard you, we weren't getting water.
Don't tell the others.
That's your backup lieutenant.
So anyway, so I've been a sergeant since two thousand and five. I've been, had two previous stints as acting lieutenant, one under Chief Mills and one under Chief Perrino. And now this is my third acting position under Chief Olson. So here we are today, looking to become permanent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Karen.
Well, thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you for having me.
And I think one of the things that jumps off the page of your resume, to your point earlier, is just the breadth and depth of your specialized training. I mean, the kind of skill sets that you've developed over the course of your career, that you bring to the table, you know, to your job every day is truly impressive. And so I thank you for that. And we've been asking the same two questions to your colleagues, so I'll stick with mine. But I am just really interested in the many things that you've done to further yourself within the department. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
As Paul kind of said quietly, the fact that the square merchants had your phone number really says that you checked the community policing box. So I probably shouldn't even ask the question. But, you know, right, one of the issues that I think police departments face these days is just their, kind of, their image in the public. And so, community policing, you know, what do you do to educate the public about the things the department does? How do you help the depart, how do you help the public get to know, you know, who the women and men are of the Hingham Police Department? And how do you help your officers get to know the town? So, you know, I sort of view the community policing as a little bit of a two-way street. So just wonder if you have some examples of your involvement in that or your vision for that?
Well, I was a member of the very first Citizens Police Academy. And I think I went through thirty-five of them. I taught crime prevention and then just helped out when I could. I worked nights, so it was kind of difficult. I was usually on duty on the, was it Wednesday nights they had the CPA? So, but I tried to help out when I can. And I encourage, I encourage my officers to participate in things like the CPA, the Family Fun Day. At one time, we had a walking beat. And the new guys, I'd like to tell them, you know, we don't do the walking beat as much as we probably should anymore, but it's okay to pull over in the square, you know, get out, walk around, call off, and just, you know, meet and greet people, like we used to do in, like in your day when it was mandatory. So, and then I think the social media. Steve Drift does a great job with social media because everybody's on it. And that's a, it's a, I think it's the greatest way to reach out to the public is social media. Let them know what we're doing, what actions we take on certain things.
Yep, yep.
You know, how we operate and, you know, put these programs that we do have out there. And so they can, you know, get involved.
Yep. And my other question really has to do with, I guess, how you handle yourself within the department in terms of, you know, now, now a role as a lieutenant. So, you know, you've grown up in the department, you've got friends and colleagues in the department, and you've had to do this, you know, three times, where you rise in the ranks, so your professional role changes. And you need to be in a position where you demand performance and excellence from those who report up to you and then, you know, up to the chief. So I guess I'm wondering how you, how that's been for you to sort of put on the lieutenant's hat and demand that from folks that you've worked with for such a long time?
It is challenging. Like you said, you've become friends with some people during your twenty-five-year career now. So, but they understand, I think, if you just, you know, it's the way you, the way you represent yourself. Okay, let them know you've been there. And what you, you have to come right out and tell them what you expect from them and not be afraid to, even though they're your friends. And they, they're, they're very responsive to it. I haven't had a problem with any officers that, you know, you know, no longer my friends, for example. I haven't lost any friends when I was promoted. We're all, we all get along well, I think, and...
That's good.
Yeah.
No easy feat.
No.
No, it is a challenge, but, you know.
Thank you.
We've got good people we work with, so.
Thank you. And congratulations on twenty-five years.
Thank you. Next week.
Wow.
That's a wonderful milestone.
Yes.
As you think about the next, you know, the next five to 10 years, what issues and challenges do you think the Hingham Police Department will face or will continue to face?
I think number one is going to be call volume. Through the, just the development of the town. For example, Derby Shops, Linden Ponds, the shipyard, those are the, those are the three that are existence now, the three new big items. And it's, we have, we're there at one of them at least once a shift, if not twice a shift. We're at Linden Ponds, the shipyard. This is, if you look at the stats, I'm sure it's a fact. And then the new developments, I mean, it's just going to add more. Anytime you have a new development, it's just more calls. I think we're more of a call-for-service organization now than we are law enforcement. And this, the calls for service are just, as the town grows, the just calls for service are just going to continue to increase and increase. And we're definitely not getting smaller. We're getting larger. So it's just, I think it's just common sense. If the more the town grows, the more the calls for service from the police department are going to grow. And the traffic is insane. Just getting here tonight, I live in Eastbridge Water, it took me an hour to get here. It should take me half an hour. I work midnights. On the midnight shift, it takes me half an hour to get here. When I came here tonight, it took me an hour to get here, just because the traffic, getting to Hingham, it's insane. So more traffic, more calls for service.
But you were still on time.
Yes, I was early.
Thank you. My other question, I'm gonna, and I've asked, I've asked everybody the same questions. I would ask if you could maybe give us an example of a circumstance or a situation where you had to demonstrate leadership. You know, you said earlier that the late Chief Carlson said that he, you know, he pulled you aside and said, you know, I see some leadership qualities in you. You know, a lieutenant is a leader in the Hingham Police Department. And I'm looking for maybe an example of a circumstance that just gives us a little bit of insight into how you lead people. How, you know, what's, kind of, what's your style?
I think you just lead by example, Mary. You just, people just look at your career, what you've done during your career. And if you've, if you've led by example, and it's a good example, they will be inspired by you and follow you and follow your lead. So I don't, there's nothing, I mean, I've been involved in incidents, which I thought I've handled well. I, you know, as a patrolman and as a lieutenant, but I just think you should just lead by example, day to day, day in and day out. And not be able to point to just one, you know, big, one big day you were the leader. I'm not even sure if I had one when I was, but, you know, just on a day-to-day basis, just, you know, lead by example.
Thank you.
Hopefully people will follow you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lieutenant, I very much enjoyed your comments. And the reasons you probably will never know, but I found them refreshingly insightful.
Thank you.
I too have enjoyed seeing you as a Hingham policeman in the different capacities. I found that my interactions with you have always been thoroughly professional. And I think you enjoy the respect of the men and women who work for you. So that's a tribute to you.
Thank you, sir.
And you've been extraordinarily patient, which is appreciated.
Thank you.
My question is kind of dovetailing into your observations with respect to the development pressure that the town is experiencing with the Derby Shops, Linden Ponds, and Shipyard, and now the Alliance Project. Where do you see your role as lieutenant with respect to the officers and sergeants that you'd be supervising, as well as the deputy and the chief that you'd be answering to as a lieutenant? How, where do you fit in in that dynamic? How do you see it?
Well, obviously, we're going to be involved in a leadership role. You just, we're going to have to make it a priority to the men and women of the department that these things are coming. And when they get here, we're going to have to respond. And we're going to have to respond professionally. And like I said, it's gonna, I'm gonna have to set an example for them by the way I act and, you know, be, you know, be submissive to the fact that these places are coming. And we're going to have to be the ones who, you know, respond to these calls and, you know, take initiative and, you know, go for it.
Let me, my final question, Lieutenant, is what do you see the greatest asset of the department? And what is it that you have zero tolerance for?
Tardiness. I hate tardiness. And they know that. So, yes. So when I go down the roll call, I expect everybody there on time. And we have issues with tardiness that I have to address sometimes. And what was the other, I'm sorry, Paul, what was the other part?
The greatest asset that you see in the department?
Just the people. The people that we have are just, they're awesome. And they're a pleasure to work with. And they're, like I said, they're willing to accept my leadership role and work for me and do what I expect. And that's all I can ask really of them. So it's great that we have people like that.
I, I hope that you enjoyed them as, as much as we did, because the answers, um...
I think Glenn's the loudest one.
The Irish whisper going. You know, the, the answers were different, but yet very interesting, and I thought reflective of the, the deep bench strength of talent that, uh, the town enjoys on its police force, and, and this is a very important decision, these people carry guns, so we're, we're trying mightily to get it right. We're not making the decision tonight, we're going to reflect upon this a bit, and, um... We...
Greetings.
I was just informing the public about the fact that we're not making the decision tonight, but we're going to reflect upon it and ruminate, and perhaps each of us, in our own way, will reach out to you and, and speak with you. I must compliment you, though, the, the, the quality of the leaders that you have in the department makes this a pleasure to undergo, because I found, and I think I speak for my colleagues here, that the four gentlemen that we interviewed for these positions are extremely professional, talented, experienced, I think any one of them would, would be superb selections for the position. The town's lucky.
I completely agree. It was really a very interesting experience tonight, and I, I echo Paul's remarks, I think they're, each in their own way, just significant leaders within the department.
And, and I would, um, each of the candidates, in their own way, mentioned the degree of professional development opportunities that they've had in Hingham, and I would commend both of you for really spearheading that. It's one of the reasons why we have four extraordinarily qualified candidates, so, thank you.
Thank you, probably good, give some hope, it's been, it's a pleasure. You know, at this point in the evening, there, there are no appointments tonight, and we're about to conclude, and we'll, we'll go around the table. Michelle, is there anything you'd like to add before we sign off?
No, thank you.
Thomas?
Thank you, I'm good.
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
I will be brief, not trying to inject politics into town government unnecessarily, but it's extremely stressful to see the impact on federal government workers with the, the shutdown, so collectively, we've been working with the town administrator and the assistant town administrator to see what opportunities there are available from, from our end to, to assist the federal workers that have been adversely impacted by what's happening in, in Washington, D.C. We have no way of knowing how long this is going to last, but you'd, you'd have to be blind not to know that we have coast guardsmen at Point Alden, and, you know, the federal government's reach is long in terms of the services it provides to local communities, so we're, we're, we're trying to come up with some ideas to, to assist people affected by this to get through it, so hopefully we won't have to be having this conversation next week, but if we do, I anticipate that we'll be refining that so that we can present to the town some of the steps that we're taking to help them get through this. I mean, you know, the, the work of the government, whether it's local or at the federal level, is vitally important to the quality of life that we enjoy, you know, whether it's maintaining the prisons, or the roadways, or the EPA, or the inspection, it, it, the list is just, you know, endless, frankly. And we take it for granted until it's not there, but, you know, if you don't mind waiting two hours to get on a plane flight, you know, I suppose, but then you have to worry about whether or not the air traffic controllers, you know, are fully, you know, able to do their job, I mean, so, without belaboring it, this is something that, we're not trying to be political here, we're just trying to help, and, you know, that, we're just trying to help fellow citizens that are in a tough spot, so. With that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, I wish you good night, I hope that you follow up, and if you're watching this, try to catch the Water Acquisition Study Committee meeting, that's on cable, I think that's a very important topic that, you know, every citizen of this town should be informing and educating themselves on, this is a generational issue that's being considered here, it's of huge importance to the town, so I, I can't stress enough the importance of trying to get up to speed if, if this isn't something you've been focusing on until recently. They're starting to, you know, come together on this issue, so very much appreciate the town's participation in it. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Holes in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you for watching.